Commissioners work session, this is Chair Catherine Harrington. I'm joined by Vice Chair Pam Trees, Commissioner Jerry Willey, Commissioner Nickley Sifai, and Commissioner Jason Snyder is coming back to work on July 16th after a well-deserved time of practice. Our agenda was updated, so hopefully everyone has caught up. We're going to have two different segments where we're going over information related to federal contracts and our upcoming resolution and order work. I have to say, returning from vacation away, it's taken a lot to catch up. I worked Saturday and Sunday afternoons and most of yesterday on this area. And I'm really excited about the updated information and the fact that things changed, so we didn't have to take such dire action as anticipated in the middle of June. But we still have some massive work to do and hard work to do. So hang in there, everyone. We're doing incredible work to continue to serve our community in the best way possible under uncertain and changing circumstances. So in hearing some news coverage on the radio this morning about victims of the Texas flood and families reconnecting with one another and trying to locate their loved ones, I think the piece that I heard really underscores the fact that as hard as this work is, it's important that we each value one another because there are no guarantees that the person next to you, your coworker, is going to be there. The other thing that beyond catching up on this next topic, I was gone for the last week plus of the state legislative session, which meant that there were some further disappointments from that, not just capital funding, but funding for mandated services that did not come through, which meant that with the lack of funding for state mandated work, particularly with regard to community corrections at from this state level, we've had to lay off some additional valued employees. And that's incredibly difficult. And I want to thank not only our management, but also all of the employees of the county for just taking care of one another and continuing to be professional each and every day. The other big thing that I caught up with was the Congress and the federal government completing the new budget bill, what President Trump labels the big beautiful bill, and disappointments there that we're continuing to have to adjust to. But that includes federal grants that are having an impact on our operations. So hang in there, everybody. Welcome, Ms. Angie. Ms. Angie is at the Oregon Association of County Managers meeting and conference, and she will need to step out by 10:50 due to a presentation that she's giving as well. So welcome. So I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Angie, John L. Bell, and Lucy Hamer. John L. and Lucy being subject matter experts from Espousal Strategies that are helping us in our work to ensure that we can continue to operate as a county with our values for the diverse community that we are while adhering to federal, state, and local laws. So at this juncture, materials, presentation materials are available, and I'll turn it over to you first, to Ms. Angie.
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, Board. I do want to just express appreciation to your board for continuing to foster a learning environment, not only for myself, but for employees. Chair, as you mentioned, I am at the Oregon City County Management Association, and I do apologize that I'm going to be stepping out, but I will be leading a skill-building workshop for managers on contracts and evaluation. So I'm looking forward to that this morning. So today's, the first agenda in your board work session is an update and discussion on the access and opportunity resolution, with deep gratitude to Espousal, specifically John L. Bell, who has been a longstanding consultant and, I would say, partner in service at Washington County for the board and public. As a reminder, John L. had led the work under the board's guidance to draft the county's equity resolution. Since that time, John L. has been, continued to be engaged in county through other types of work, such as transportation equity work, and also is a bridge to build communications capacity within the county. Next slide. So the key questions, and with this, I'm going to turn it over to John L. to start the presentation, and we'll be going back and forth for a bit to this.
Well, good morning, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update in terms of some of the work that we've been really rolling up our sleeves with, all of you and employees, as well as ACRE, in developing your access and opportunity resolution. Before I move forward, I'd like to introduce my colleague Lucy.
Hello, everyone, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Lucy Hamer. I am the Senior Manager of Civil Rights at Espousal Strategies, and I'm also serving as project manager for this and working with you.
So Lucy and I, here in a second, we'll go through a couple of slides. And the bulk of our presentation really rests around these two particular questions that we'll have an opportunity of hearing your feedback on. We are aware that in your packet is the draft, working draft resolution that is hot off the press, that we'll want to hear your feedback on these two specific questions, which is what questions or feedback do you have on the process to bring a resolution to your board on July 22nd, 2025 for action? And what would you like to be considered in the new resolution? Next slide, please. Turnover Lucy maybe for this here.
Yeah, so just to set the stage, you know, how we've come here and how Espousal's been engaged in this work, as you all are well aware, you released a statement on June 24th, really grounding the work and the path forward in terms of drafting a new resolution, and really tying it to the need to sign the federal grants and contracts. So that $135 million of funding annually is essentially on hold while we determine this path forward and construct this resolution that will affirm the county's values, affirm the county's commitment, and advancing policies and programs in a non-discriminatory manner. And so that is what has been our guiding star in approaching this work with you. But I will turn it back over to Tanya.
So just as a reminder, Washington County is a local government, and we deliver vital services to community members each and every day. Some of these services are through contracts with community-based organizations and businesses. We always strive to provide access and opportunity for all people in a safe and legal manner for the individual and also for the county. We also want to ensure that we have a safe workplace for employees. So funds for services come from county property taxes fees, plus state and federal funds are made available to the county through contracts per, and I want to underscore, their requirements. I will stress that the federal government, and this is in my opinion, does not negotiate. They say this is your contract, and these are your contract terms if you want to receive these dollars. And we rely on $135 million annually in federal funds. This can go up and down because sometimes we do receive one-time funding, whether it's for a capital project or a one-time or short-term initiative or service. The federal government controls the requirements which the county must adhere to, and these are called, the compliance in contract terms is called attestation. So the federal government provides a contract and says, here's the terms that you, as a county, must follow in order to receive these funds. Once again, this isn't a negotiation back and forth. These are the terms that the federal government sets. Next slide. So what did we see starting in January? And for the board and members of the public, there is a much more expansive timeline that is included in the PowerPoint that Clerk Moss had posted within the last hour. Starting in January, we started to see orders issued by the Presidents of the United States acting as his capacity of the executive branch, more than previous administrations. We had seen executive orders almost coming daily, multiple actually coming within a day. So what is an executive order? An executive order has the force of federal law unless it is invalidated through legislation, that means through Congress. It is found unlawful by federal courts, and there are some pursuing actions at this point in time to nullify any of the over 100 executive orders or revoked by the current president, administration, or successor in the office. How are executive orders then applied? Once there's an executive order, that executive order then is, in essence, distributed to the branch agencies. So branch agencies that we commonly interact with is HUD and DOT, as well as others. They are obligated, those agencies are obligated to follow the President's lawful executive orders. Next slide. I'll turn it back to John L.
I'm going to turn it back over to Lucy.
So here's just a brief timeline of how Espousal's been approaching and engaging this work. And so, again, this is about over a four-week period, and right now, we're in that second quadrant there, July 7th to July 11th. But we've talked a lot about the resolution and how we're framing it. But the other piece that we haven't talked about yet is how we're engaging the community. And so this timeline helps reflect some of that work. And so previously, last week, we met with ACRE. We met again with them last night to get their sense of the community, get their feedback, their thoughts, and input in terms of what is valuable to incorporate in the resolution, as well as what's valuable to ensure we do in our engagement with staff or with community-based organizations, more specifically. We also met with county leadership team last week for the similar purpose of saying, what's important to you as, you know, employees of the county, as members of the county, to see reflected in this resolution? Yesterday, we had our first county employee listening session, which some of you attended. But we had 39 folks come to that to share their thoughts with us again of what are they hearing, seeing in terms of impacts to community-based organizations, but also what's important to them to see reflected in this resolution, as well as what's important for after this? You know, we have this resolution that we're working on with you, but then there's this question that comes up of, okay, then what? You know, and still really hearing from them in terms of path forward and getting that support to them. Today, obviously, we have our work session today and to really work with you on this resolution again to make sure that it meets the needs of this moment. This week also, we have our CBO Partner Roundtable. And so we have, we do have CBOs registering for that. And in addition, we have the CBO drop-in listening session on Friday. And so this will be a five-hour session that straddles both working hours and evening hours to ensure that the maximum number of people can attend. And so those will be virtually. And we're opening that more broadly to CBOs that aren't only partnered with the county in that formal way, but those that are based in the county, work in the county, who may have thoughts, feelings, or input to share on this. Next week, we'll again reengage with ACRE, as well as with you, to work this resolution forward and have our second county employee listening session. So again, giving them an update on the work as it's progressing, and again, hearing from them, their thoughts and feedback on this process and on this resolution. And then finally, that final week, that final ACRE meeting, and then with the endeavor of bringing it before you to vote on the 22nd.
And Lucy, before we move on from this slide, I just want to underscore that this timeline is meant to show a timeline of the work of Espousal. This does not depict the journey that we have been on this calendar year through the changes at the federal level. Thank you.
Chair Harrington, I have a question to Tanya. Tanya.
Hang on one second. Are we at the point of questions? Or do we have more material to go over? Because I see more slides.
I have a question on this slide. I have a question on this slide. Tanya, I really like the slide, especially some of the activities that you listed, in particular, the 7-10 and the 7-11. Is this something that you see or foresee the Board of County Commissioners can also attend and participate in and listen in? Or is this specifically for CPO Partner Roundtable that the board shouldn't be?
So your question is specific to the CBO engagement?
And the drop-in office hour listening sessions. I'm wondering, is that something that I could participate if I wanted to, if my time allowed?
So John L. and Lucy, can you speak more to the format of those sessions? And then I will respond.
Do you want to talk about the format? Yeah, so essentially, the format is we've worked with both, we've received feedback from ACRE in terms of CBO partners, as well as worked with county staff to identify a list of CBO partners that the county regularly works with. And these might be CBO partners who currently have contracts with the county or work in close proximity to the county. So the format essentially will be a listening session. We really want to hear what folks' feedback is in terms of this draft process and resolution, as well as concerns they're having. Many of these folks are recipients of county funds, and will also have to make determination within their organization as to how they adhere to this new federal landscape. And so with that, County Administrator, turn over to you for a brief response.
Yeah, to any of these sessions, I would ask if commissioners are interested in attending. And I want to say, the employee listening sessions, as well as the CBO roundtables, it is important to note that you are a member of the audience. You are not a participating entity because the focus is on the CBOs as well as on employees. And I have had, just yesterday and also to all employee meetings, there are commissioners that do come from time to time, and commissioners do go to community meetings. The focus of these is on the employee and the CBOs. Also, Espousal Strategies will be producing a summary of the feedback that they do hear and they gather from each of these engagements. The other piece that we're really trying to be thoughtful about is creating spaces that are safe for community and employees to engage. There is significant concern about what engagement means, and in some cases, I have heard directly from CBOs of not wanting to have their names released because they have also concerns about being eligible for federal funds based on, based on who they are as an organization. So I also want to hold that very close to all of us as we work through this process, that it's sensitive and it's complicated.
Thank you.
So for full disclosure, I, as I might have mentioned, I was working Saturday afternoon and Sunday afternoon to try and come up to speed. And I found that, including through last night, that certain public records are not up to date, and my colleagues and executive staff know that one of my operating philosophies is trust, yet verify. So for example, there are meeting packets that still aren't posted appropriately. So in my effort to come up to speed and find out what is this work that Espousal's doing, I attended the employee listening session yesterday afternoon, sat against the wall to make sure that I was, just had the benefit of the information as presented. So I specifically, as usual, respect the work that and the trust that we place, not only in our employees, but also in our consultants in doing this work. So I am very comfortable with all of you experts meeting with the CBO partners in every single fashion that is comfortable to them. Similarly, with ACRE. I would like to also expand with this timeline that, and this is why I mention, having the packets posted appropriately, is we are a local government and have made a lot of improvements over our tenure to have, to practice openness and transparency. So we do have a strict timeline that we need to adhere to, or it will have the impact on people in our community. So like it or not, we are all on a very fast-paced journey, and the materials will be changing from week to week. So there, obviously, new material for today's meeting. We will update material as needed in the packet as a result of today's meeting. So then that can go into the ACRE meeting next Monday. We'll have material for our Tuesday, the 15th meeting. We'll be doing further work as a board that day, updated packet material. So ACRE will have new material yet again, hopefully near final material, and for those who can't see, my fingers are crossed, for their July 21st meeting. But they're very much on the journey with us. And then our final action, hopefully, and I remain very hopeful and optimistic for July 22nd. So thank you all for your patience, and thank you to our consultant and to our staff, just working so fast-paced to get this done. Did that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Yeah.
And yeah, back to you.
Thank you. So, Board, at your June 12th Roundtable presentation, you received a presentation from our Access and Opportunity Director, Alisa Sorenger, and that link is provided here for convenience of the public. So what is access and opportunity? This is the language we use to talk about fairness, justice, and belonging has always evolved, and that evolution continues into the future. And through that presentation, Alisa had spoke to how our language has evolved over time. This evolution is not about abandoning our values. I actually want to repeat that. It is not about abandoning our values. It is actually about deepening and broadening them in ways that are clear, more actionable outcomes, and more inclusive for everyone in our community. Next slide. And I'm passing it to Lucy to talk about how access and opportunity connects to work with federal laws and guidance.
Yes, thank you. And so talking about access and opportunity as a concept, you know, they've always been grounded in federal law and non-discrimination law. I've listed some here, but this is not an exhaustive list. But thinking of these statutes that really give guidance in terms of how programs and activities are administered, especially those that are funded in whole or in part by federal dollars, ensuring that they are operated in a non-discriminatory manner. You know, our approach in our read, you know, these executive orders provide instruction to ensure that programs that do support access and opportunity are doing so in a lawful manner. And so again, it's really about ensuring that access for all and that opportunity for all, and those, again, those civil rights laws really laying the groundwork and the foundation for that approach.
Can I, can I ask a question? It's not about the lawful manner, but one thing that we've really improved on in my six-plus years thus far is support for all of the 10, what's referred to as safe harbor languages, and, you know, everything from having documents available in English and Spanish and access to other language support for the 10. Will we be able to continue that work? Because it's so valued in the community. Is that part of, what I don't know is, for these high-level taglines summarizing what federal expectations are? I was thinking about it this morning. I couldn't remember which category it came under.
So, Madam Chair, what I will say is you've just wandered into one of my favorite realms. So I don't know, smiling. What you're talking about is language access, and the Civil Rights Act lays it out under Title VI really clearly. So language access still is the law. One of the executive orders that, you know, we are contending with gave updated guidance in terms of, must you comply with language access? It does not forbid it whatsoever.
Oh, good.
And so, yes, we, language access is still the law of the land under Title VI.
If I can, if I can just take a moment to build on that, in your adopted budget, our access and opportunity initiative, which has evolved from the Budget Equity Tool, includes examining language access within departments. So we are actively, it's not just about policy and having the documents in place, but we are, we are actively working to ensure that we are upholding that law in our service delivery and tying it to budget decision-making.
We just keep getting better and better.
And so this is just a very high level overview again of how we are trying to approach this work. And so there's the aspect of aligning the resolution with federal guidance, but also this piece of ensuring that it is reflective of Washington County. So the people who work within or work for Washington County, the community-based organizations that are based in and work in Washington County, and other interested parties, again, to ensure that this draft resolution is not only framed around this lawful language that we've been talking about, but it also is, again, reflective of the community, reflective of the county, and that it honors the county's values.
So to just boil it down, and here in a second, we'll have an opportunity of reading through the draft resolution. As we indicated, the Access and Opportunity Resolution will really serve to affirm the county's compliance to civil rights and non-discrimination laws. The whole purpose of the resolution is to really be narrowly tailored, to reaffirm the county's commitment to non-discrimination, which frankly, in our view, really allows you to advance your access and opportunity work, your equity work, in a much more sort of reinforced way. It supports existing county program and policies by affirming they are aligned with civil rights law. And as we indicated, a working draft of the Access and Opportunity Resolution will be brought to you and has been brought to you today.
And I want to emphasize working draft. We're, so we have working draft number one today, and you can expect that we'll have new versions of it all along the way. I'm placing a bet right now, free wager, that by July 22nd, we'll be at least to version
And just to recap of some of the engagement, as indicated, we had a discussion with County Leadership Team on July 2nd, two listening sessions with county staff, one was on July 7th, we'll have the concurrent one on the 16th. And we also have an anonymous online forum for feedback and thoughts. You want to talk a little bit about that forum?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. So, yeah, we sent an anonymous form to county staff. We also have sent one out to CBOs. They are two different surveys, just to, because the feedback we're looking for is a little bit different. But we've actually had a, an excellent response rate for staff so far. And we're seeing thoughts and feedback kind of across the continuum and across the gamut. And so there's been a lot of candor and a lot of thoughtful engagement as well. And so again, we intend to really use these, these thoughts and input, again, to inform this resolution, to ensure, again, that it is reflective of the county's values. Because I will say, one of the emerging themes, again, and Because I will say, one of the emerging themes, again, and we'll talk about a little bit more a bit later on, but it is, you know, the grounding it and the work being so important. You know, the programs, the services are so important to the community. And the feedback to date from staff has really affirmed that and understanding the need for action, because these programs are so essential to the communities the county serves.
And in terms of the community engagement recap there again, targeting engagement with community-based organizations and interested parties, we noted the July 10th roundtable. We'll also have the CBO virtual drop-in hours on July 11th. And then, of course, the ACRE meetings. We are meeting with ACRE once a week. Commissioner Teresa, that's been at all of those as well, as well as an anonymous online forum for feedback and thoughts for that as well.
For CBOs specifically?
For CBOs.
Yeah, not for community at large.
That's right.
I want to be clear, because one of my continued experiences, as my colleagues had the opportunity to see as we started getting community feedback as of the, you know, I'll say June 12th. There's been a lot of misunderstanding about what we do, why we need to make adjustments, and some group calls to action. And one of the things that continues to, or has come through loud and clear through this week is, and even through some articulations that I'm hearing from ACRE and CBO partners, is they want us to solve national-scale problems that don't directly relate to our service delivery. And that's not what county government does. And so, this will come in, in our presentation later in terms of talking points that I need with staff's help in order to clearly and crisply articulate that we're not able to solve all these challenges or disappointments, or even sources of anger that people are feeling with regard to the federal administration, whether it's the president, the agencies, Supreme Court, whatever. So, it's a tough time.
So what we've heard so far, again, drawing from the surveys and also the staff listening session yesterday, are kind of three major themes here. So first off, honoring the values of the county. And so, you know, we've seen some emotional responses from folks, you know, are we walking back our values? You know, some misinformation out there in terms of what people believed was the path forward, but I think a lot of people learned a lot yesterday. The feedback was resoundingly positive of people feeling like, okay, I've connected the dots here, and they really appreciated that engagement from leadership coming in and helping see that path forward. But again, really wanting to ground it in the values of the county and serving the community. The second point being that federal grants are essential to keeping programs and services operating. And so, some people taking kind of this track of, you know, whatever it takes to, to keep the funds going and to keep programs going, let's do it. And taking that extremely pragmatic approach, but also this feeling of uncertainty of, okay, we do this work, and then what? Because understanding that this landscape is evolving all the time. You know, we are always kind of watching the headlines to see what happens next. And so, that uncertainty being communicated to county staff from their CBO partners as well, those who may have braided funding, having questions, concerns about the security of those funds, as well as uncertainty just around language. You know, what are we allowed to say, what are we not allowed to say in the furtherance of our work? And so, yesterday, it was, you know, my overall sense was, you know, folks are wanting to engage with this. They're wanting to know more, they want to understand better their role within the process and how to move the work forward as well. And so, it was, again, a really positive session in terms of understanding not just our path forward as your consultants and how we approach the work, but then the path forward afterwards with the county internally as an organization and as we engage, or as the county engages with the community moving forward as well. So with that, we actually are ready to show that draft resolution for you all. Again, reiterating.
And remember, this is our resolution.
Yes.
I want to underscore that it has not gone through full legal, even beginning legal review. It is literally hot off the presses. So in terms of wording and phraseology, it will undergo change.
Absolutely, so.
Why don't we, you all should have it. Why don't we walk through each of the pages?
Correct.
Absolutely.
I wonder if we can pull that up on the screen.
Because it, it tells the story.
I think, Chair, you're not done with this presentation, though. There are more slides and.
Nope, that was the last slide.
Timeline.
Oh, and, and as maybe just sort of recap this business, as we receive feedback from you, and of course, I know you'll share your perspective of what would be helpful for us as your consultants as we're working with you and developing that.
So, this isn't the ending point. We need to go to our second segment to close on a lot of this, because there's a whole portion to this story that wasn't embodied here that we need to make sure we cover. And so, I don't know if each of you are able to stay for our second question or not. So, but first, with regard to process, do, are commissioners grounded in what the proposed process is? Or do you have any further questions on the process?
I guess I'm, I'm waiting for, I'm waiting for a little bit more information. I was happy that you told us some of the content of the meetings that you've been having. I'm hoping that you have, that they are well-attended by our employees. So we have a significant amount of engagement on this. And, yeah, right now, I'm, I'm aware, so to answer your question, yes. But I'm still watching as we proceed and see what evolves.
I'm looking for a thumbs up or a nod or a question.
I'm, I'm comfortable with the, the timeline process that you laid out. And I do want to emphasize what Commissioner Jerry Willey requested around, like, and I think maybe perhaps I'm gonna just project and say, the board work session on the 7/15, perhaps we'll get some of that feedback, some of the synthesis of what the feedbacks were from staff and community members. But really, that would be a key driving element to inform what the final resolutions should look like from a policymaking perspective, this side of the table. So I think that's the key information that I would like to see, to distilled information of like, what have people been saying? I, I really like the, the three elements of what you've heard that you laid out. I, I thought that was really good. And, but perhaps there might be more nuanced and more qualitative answers and information that you could share with us.
Absolutely.
So I think that would, will help us be informed at the ground level so that we can incorporate our own perspectives and what the final resolution should look like in a way that protects the community, the staff, and the county as well.
Absolutely, yeah, happy to prepare that for the 15th.
So before we move on to reviewing the, this first working draft, I also want to give board members the heads-up that our work session day, and we have also board meetings on the 15th, business meetings, please clear your calendars to meet right up to 5:00 PM. There won't be any new departures. We've got some new information that will be coming in that day.
Next week?
The 15th. So in order for us to be successful on the 22nd, we need to continue to be nimble. Great, so, page one. We each have it in hard copy form, and it's in our published packet, so let's get to it.
Yep, let's go line by line. So this matter having come before the Washington County Board on July 22nd, 2025, and it appearing to the board that. So it appearing that residents, workers, and visitors in Washington County.
Why is that line important? Because it doesn't mention businesses. So I'm, I'm questioning why that line is. I'm, I'm just gonna leave it, I don't need an answer today.
Let me ask one other question, just to start this thing. It appearing.
That's our standard.
I was expecting a typical resolution has whereas.
Yeah, we do.
And so, it appearing, would you contrast that term?
That's, that's where the legal review and as to form hasn't been done yet. So we.
Oh, okay, thank you for that.
Yep, yep.
I inserted for myself, whereas, whereas, for everywhere.
Figure out what that was.
We, we had a draft with whereas, I think.
Yeah, we, we had a whereas draft, but county, we've got feedback from staff saying it's that it appearing that. So happy to revert back to the whereas.
We'll get it sorted.
Yeah, yeah, that one, that, that's an easy switch. It appearing that Washington County affirms one of the foundational principles of the United States is that all residents, workers, and visitors are treated equally under the law. It appearing that longstanding federal and state civil rights laws protect individuals from discrimination, and these protections serve as a bedrock supporting equality of access and opportunity for all. And it appearing that every Washington County resident is afforded these protections. And it appearing that every Washington County resident is entitled to equal access and opportunity to the county's services without discriminatory practices. And it appearing that Washington County is committed to First Amendment-protected free speech and other rights and protect, protections guaranteed by the United States Constitution, as well as complying with all applicable laws prohibiting discrimination in the provision of its services, benefits, programs, and activities. And it appearing that Washington County is committed to advancing policies and programs that enable access and opportunity for all without regard to race, color, disability status, ethnicity, national origin, or other classes protected by federal or state law. And it appearing that Washington County remains committed to providing respectful and compassionate service to residents, workers, and visitors in Washington County as part of its commitment to responsible stewardship, results-based service excellence, continuous improvement, and effective and efficient government operations. And now therefore be it resolved and ordered that on this day, 22nd of July, 2025, the Washington County Board of Commissioners will understand the concepts of access and opportunity as follows. Access refers to the intentional design and implementation of systems, environments, and practices that enable all individuals to obtain and utilize resources, services, and opportunities. This involves proactively identifying and removing physical, technological, and linguistic barriers that may hinder full participation. By fostering environments where everyone can engage meaningfully, access ensures that individuals are not excluded due to factors such as ability, background, or socioeconomic status. Opportunity denotes the fair and just provision of chances for individuals to pursue personal and professional growth, contribute to decision-making processes, and achieve their potential. This concept emphasizes the importance of creating conditions where one's background or circumstances do not predetermine success, but is attainable through fair and just support, resources, and recognition of individual talents, efforts, and merit. Commit to ensuring that we spend the public's dollars in a manner compliant with federal, state, and local laws, including those that protect Washington County residents, workers, and visitors from unlawful discrimination as provided by Civil Rights Act of 1964, the Age Discrimination Act of 1975, the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990, Genetic Information Non-Discrimination Act of 2008, the Age Discrimination in Employment Act of 1967, the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, the Public Health Service Act of 1944, and Oregon Revised Statutes, Chapter 659. Direct the county administrator to conduct proactive programmatic reviews twice a year to ensure compliance with federal and state non-discrimination laws.
I'll kick it off and say I appreciate the changes that, the structural changes that you made from the pre-working draft that I saw yesterday. But I also reviewed our February 25, 2020 Equity Resolution and really see how this, the Equity Resolution really set a foundation and was our, part of our journey in that specific point in time. And this, I'd refer to it as the Equity and Access Resolution, or Access and Opportunity, sorry, Resolution, builds on that and continues to advance us and is clear and straightforward, right? We have these definitions with regard to access and opportunity and how we're going about implementing them through the course of our local county government work. So, and I know as our legal experts continue to evaluate this as well as other information from across the nation, there may be some particular whereas clauses or refined wording that we need to do. Other comments from commissioners? Is this a good start, for example?
Yeah, I thought it was a good start. And this is one of the things that, obviously, you've been engaged in it from the get-go, first wardens, and I have not, and so I'm just processing this. But it intrigued me a little bit that on the last page there where you're talking, where you're reciting the Civil Rights Act of 65 and all of those different acts. The most recent one is 2008. Before that, it was, what was it, 90 and 94? I mean, there hasn't been any substantial unlawful discrimination acts since then. And so, I just want to make sure we don't miss something here. And so, and continuing forward, how do we make this a, kind of a fluid resolution that all of a sudden, something else pops up that we need to be including in here? I mean, we're gonna have to redo the resolution and include it. I, I'm just thinking about forward on this.
If, if I could, on that, and I'm relying upon continued legal work to help us in that regard. What I'm familiar with is there are these acts, and then, you know, congressional and presidential-signed legislation. And then there are the, in Oregon vernacular, there are the OARs, the rules, right? There are the regulations that follow. And so, and part of the reason we're having to do this work is because there's new case law, right, all the time. And as we've learned through the course of this year, executive orders carry the force of federal law. You know, specifically as noted today that unless there is a change in legislation or they're ruled as illegal. So temporary injunctions don't help us, you know, things like that. So we have to adhere not only to these acts, but all of the regulations that are pertinent at the time. And so, Alex, that's where I'm relying upon legal to give that proper context. Yeah. So, but those are the, as I understand it, these are the major acts.
Yeah, that's kind of what I thought, those, the bold ones.
Yep, and we're making sure that our definitions, just like with the Equity Resolution, had definitions that we are adopting lawful definitions for that. So it's a stake in the ground, right? I mean, we didn't know in 2020 that we would be taking specific action in 2025. So, for example, as I've looked at this, I've been thinking about future boards of commissions, right? Every two years, board, the board composition can change. Not that it does change, but it can change. So you're, you're spot-on looking at it in today's context, but wondering about the future course of timing. Yes.
And I can add too, because it is, it is a thoughtful question. You know, these, these acts that we've listed specifically, it's not an exhaustive list whatsoever. This was just a start. But the other, the other point I would make here is, you know, many of these, when we write them out, typically you write as amended at the end, because I do see many amendments over the years. Or just other pieces of legislation to help bolster or affirm them. I'll give you another example would be the Equal Pay Act came out in 1963. Or just other pieces of legislation to help bolster or affirm them. I'll give you another example would be the Equal Pay Act came out in nineteen sixty three, but it was actually really strengthened during the Obama administration when he passed the Lilly Ledbetter Fair Pay Act. And so that would be one where, yes, the initial statute came out in the nineteen sixties, but it was added on to through other pieces of legislation. And so many of these civil rights laws are complemented, bolstered, supported and strengthened by other pieces of legislation that wouldn't necessarily be listed. Because an exhaustive list, I think, would be challenging across every sector, but these, I would describe these as almost the, the corners of the foundation.
And that's good to know because I was thinking exactly the same thing. It's like, we started down this path. How far do we go down? And when we say, okay, we're good, it's all inclusive now. And so, so yeah, thank you for pointing that out. I'll keep that in mind.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thumbs up that one. Okay.
Sorry, I was thinking about how I was agreeing this. When I look at, I just want to table this and I'm reflecting on some of the things I've heard through our ACRE conversations. And I will say that in we, we heard last night and previously, under the concept of opportunity also exists the concept of survival, not just being successful, but survival. And I'm, I'm just putting that on the table for us to consider as we move forward. Because one of the things that I have heard is, in this environment, there's a step before opportunity and, and success. So I'm just going to put that out there.
Yeah, I, I heard that too last night. And I can't relate it to a specific service that we as a local county government offer. And we were defining policy as it relates to our specific services. So that goes back to my comment about how we're addressing or able to address, and it's more that we're not able to address societal ills. We're able to provide services for, by example, we are able to provide services that change the nature of poverty, but we are just one player in that. So, you know, it's, it's part of individual and groups of individuals, so communities, community groups, lived experience and realm. But there's only so much that we as a local government are able to provide through services to touch and influence that. So.
Mr. Treece, were they, what, what was the context of the survival?
I'm, and I am responding to someone else's comments, so I will, I'll give you my interpretation and I'd ask for further interpretation as well. It's really around groups of people that are feeling so threatened in the current environment. And I think that the, the threat is the removal of access to things like health and human services. That's where I see that survival linkage. And while I agree with the Chair on the responsibility, not on the county for, for the totals addressing the issue in totality, I think that there is, there may be room here for addressing the issue within the services that we do provide, as, as the Chair pointed out.
Well, I think if, if you have, if you can come up with a specific suggestion, great, but at this juncture.
And I put, and I mentioned early on that I'm putting this on the table. I don't have a suggestion at this point. But I am reflecting what I've heard and putting it on the table for us to consider. And that's part of my understanding is that that's part of this process.
I can, I can see that. I think with the budget that passed at the federal level and what might happen to SNAP that affects WIC and Health and Human Services programs, I can see that, not to mention the whole, whole bunch of other executive orders out there that are also impacting the, the ability for people to survive and thrive and in our community. I don't, this was a lot to react in terms of, for me, my comment is, you know, a lot to digest. I think it's a, I think the Chair said it well. This is really a good start. And we definitely have something to work from. And I definitely have to have a conversation with our legal and county council and, and also just be grounded in the, the start of this. Yes, this, I, I think, I don't know if we're going to get to it, Chair, but the principle, I think that was a really good document to include in the material.
Yep.
Yeah, that to include. One of the things that it reminded me was there, in, in our proposed budget that we passed, no longer proposed, but the budget that we passed.
That we adopted.
Adopted. Thank you for that language. The, the budget that we adopted for this fiscal year that started July first, one of the, in that adoption included access and opportunity, which was really reframing of the, that office and, and what that office does. So that was really good grounding for me. And then it paused the question, how did we get here? How did we ended up having this conversation? I think the inception of this was started because we were trying to accept federal grants.
So if we could pause, if you have a specific question, great, but we have a whole nother section that is getting over, covers that.
So we started with the acceptance of federal grants. So I think for me, that's, that's where we started this journey to get to where we are. But again, like, I think this is for my own mental note is to have a conversation with Alex and Tanya to see how, you know, with this resolution, how do we accept those federal grants? And then how did that really acknowledge the, the reality that exists in, for Washington County, we're a home rule county? And then the reality that exists for our state, we have state laws. So I think that's where it all comes together for me, Alex, and for us to sit down is to really have that conversation about how do we get to that federal grant and accept that, recognizing the executive orders that are in place. So I think that's really a beautiful start and I'm really glad this journey we're in. And I really appreciate the thought you all put in and, and the activities that you listed in the timelines because you're being thoughtful and, and starting with the employees, going to the community and coming back to the employees and then going to, I, I, I think it's a very well designed and I want to commend Tanya's leadership on this. And Alex, your leadership and all this ACAs and how you're going about resolving this emotionally charged issue. Both legally and, you know, both logic and emotion are running together here. And I don't know how you compartmentalize it, but you're doing a fantastic job. And I just appreciate the journey we're on and I'm with you. And Alex, the questions I have are very easy, so they're, but, and then I will think about, you know, how to give you those feedback through Tanya.
Well, also remember that our public meetings, our work sessions as a board is where we function as a board. So we have to work together as a work group to develop policy and investment decisions and do that as a group of five members of the commission. So this isn't a matter of having five individual conversations with multiple staff members and somehow they figure it all out. We're the decision makers. It's our resolution and order. And we are each individually expected to contribute to the whole.
Yeah.
So we will be having further discussions on the fifteenth and the twenty first to lead towards that hopeful completion on the twenty second.
Yeah, no, definitely. I didn't, I, I, I hope I didn't sound that I was bypassing the board's conversation and discussion and just having staff, subject matter experts, but I will come back.
So any other questions or comments on the form of today's working draft of the resolution and order?
Good start.
Okay, great. Thank you. You'll be with us as we go through this next section. And Ms. Angie is, as I mentioned, only able to be with us till ten fifty, that's ten five oh. And we now have our second segment and a different, there are three ingredients that we had for this section. One was the Access and Opportunity Resolution, another is Board Principles and a PowerPoint presentation. Why don't I start with the Board Principles? Well, I don't know. I'm, I'm of two minds because the Board Principles really are a result of where we find ourselves. So I would prefer that we go over the presentation material together. The Board Principles, I have drafted them as a tool that we are familiar using. It's just a first version proposal. We do need to have discussion on them. So at this juncture, we'll go to the second segment and Tanya and Marnie have put this information together for us.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Marnie, for joining me in this presentation. I feel a bit flat footed when I'm not in the room and everyone looks so small and I feel like I look so big on the screen. Much of, much of this information is what you have been presented before. We have tried based on feedback to just really expand on the journey that we've been on. And Commissioner Phi, you had brought that up. Like, when did we start this work? And so we'll talk about that today. I'm really open to board feedback on what we may be missing in this presentation. Next slide. Quicker. So this is just an important.
Can you go back?
Yeah, somebody clicked it for me. So we do this work because of community, because of the people that we serve. And I just find that these pictures are just so powerful. These pictures depict county services in action, working in partnership for and with community. Next slide. Um, so I did cover this in version in John L. and Lucy in the previous presentation, so I am not going to repeat it. I will just highlight the box on the bottom. Community members and businesses receive vital county services each and every day. Next slide. So a disclaimer that we will be adding in all of these upcoming presentations is, at this point in time, this presentation includes information to the best of our knowledge at this point. As discussed previously, this is a fluid and dynamic situation that is constantly changing. And we could leave this meeting and have new information that should be discussed moving. Next slide. I, I also had talked about executive orders, so I am not going to repeat this slide, but just mention this is also connected to the previous presentation. Next slide.
Wait, wait. Can I pause it this slide?
Yep.
One of my frustrations with community sentiment is people saying, well, just ignore the executive orders. And this is one reason why it's so vital that we have carried the information that is on this slide and make it publicly available. And it goes to part of what I'm looking for ACRE to do, and I've not been able to verify that they have had the benefit of the facts that are before us because their packets aren't available. And that is the set of circumstances that we find ourselves in. And that includes this statement as well as the other facts. So I just, in every, every Tuesday set of work that we have through the twenty second, I think it's vital that we continue to carry this information and include it in the slide deck. So that's all.
I, I think that this information is also, Chair Harrington, debatable, especially, Alex, I'm going to put you on the spot here for the second bullet point. It says, an executive order has the force of federal law unless it is invalidated through legislation. I'm not sure that's correct. So I think executive orders has, are applicable to federal agencies and within the executive branch. And enforced through grants, yes, but these, it's not applicable to state jurisdictions. So, so I think of the part I'm having a bit of a barrier here is invalidated through legislation. Executive orders aren't, that's not true. Is, is, is your understanding?
So I think we may need to take the discussion after the meeting, Commissioner, because I, I, I think I understand what you're asking, but I want to make sure I have a full picture. I mean,
Yeah.
that.
So an executive order is from the President.
Yes.
Within the executive branch.
Yes.
Applicable to the executive branch, correct?
It asks with the force of federal law on the executive branch agency. You support that, obligate.
And enforce through federal grants.
Can be.
To the other, right?
Correct.
So.
But it's not limited to. If agencies provide grants, then.
Yeah, so the executive order is almost a adhering for the purposes of this county because the executive order ultimately binds the federal agency, which we then have contractual privy with, and they are bound to implement that executive order through their programs and policies. Does that help?
Yes, but state, it's not the thing I'm trying to, it's not applicable to state jurisdictions. So whether you can attest to the grants or not attest, correct?
Correct.
So, so this, 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 this language here, unless it is invalidated through legislation. Help me understand that.
Okay.
True.
I'm out. Okay, because we've, this is language that we have through the work of our staff. And I understand you would like to debate a lot of the legal nuances of that. But we're not going to be able to get through our material in, in, according to our agenda time today. So.
Chair Harrington, which one is it? Earlier you said we have to have a board conversations and discussions. And now you're saying, no, we don't have.
So I am noting that you are one of five who wants to debate.
Not debate, I'm having a board conversation. It's the benefit of the community. I'm not here by myself.
We are not having, we're not having another board conversation about the legal definitions and terms. Okay, we've had the benefit of grounding through multiple executive sessions. I appreciate that you continue to have questions on the legal assessment and I suggest.
No, I'm challenging what's on the slides here and.
Okay, board, we are now entangled.
Please weigh in the rest of the board members. I think we need to have a full discussion here and not pick and choose which topic we discussed in depth and which discussion we override because you disagree one person.
No, I know. I thought the board was grounded in the executive, in the legal assessment we had prior to today's meeting because this is not new information. And I'm trying to note.
What legal assessment are you referring to? Please put it on the record.
As you know, by state law, we are not allowed to disclose content of executive sessions because if we do, it waits.
I'm just trying to keep the conversation. I'm just trying to keep the conversation in one line.
If I could, if I could weigh in a little bit. I understand you have some concerns about that, that executive orders and exactly what they, what we are obligated to follow versus your interpretation of what exactly they mean. I personally am relying on our legal counsel.
Yep.
To define that and certainly give us direction. There are lots of folks out there that don't agree with where we're going. They think we should fight the federal government and we should sign the contracts anyway and all this stuff. I think it's incumbent on not only our legal department, us, but us, to feel comfortable about what we are doing. And I think that's the process we're going through. If you have some questions about that, personally, I do not want to sit in on a debate, a legal debate. Because I'm going to rely on our legal department for one thing, but I think you could have that. I would just prefer it not to be in this session.
Yeah, but this, then this, I think then we need to amend what's on this slide. And E O C, E O has the force of federal law unless it is invalidated through legislation.
But if we determine that it's wrong, then we'll change it. But we haven't determined that yet. You've made the request, but we don't necessarily agree with your request. So do your homework with the, with our legal department. And if everybody comes back and says, you know, yeah, we probably had the wrong words here or something like that, then we'll change it.
Okay.
Okay, but we're not going to change it today because obviously.
Well, it's on the record that is, I, it's in my opinion that it's incorrect.
Definitely, you're on the record.
We need to have discussion.
We'll follow up.
Follow up with you, Commissioner, and get on your schedule.
And to my, from my point of view here, I, again, as Commissioner Willie pointed out, will follow our legal advice unless there is legal advice. With all due respect, I can understand the challenge, but you're not a lawyer and you're not in this, in this.
Not yet.
No, you were in law school.
I'm not. So, so back to my point is I'm going to follow what Alex said unless there is a change where we have legal advice to do so. And the bottom line for me is, executive orders notwithstanding, we are still going through this process. So I want, I want to move forward on the resolution and order and the work that we need to do to get there. Right?
I think it's, it's important for this county to, to pick the accurate information that's out there rather than interpreting.
So as presiding officer, for the sake of this meeting, by our charter, my responsibility is to facilitate and ensure that we run these meetings. I am observing that one member of the commission disagrees with the best legal opinion and articulation that we have as of today and we need to move on.
Okay, so federal grants and grant funds and assurance language. County relies on one hundred and thirty-five million annually in federal funds. Of these dollars, approximately ninety percent of these federal funds are direct federal funding to the county, direct contracts with the county. And ten percent are passed through funding through other agencies such as the state. As we previously discussed with your board, July and August are the primary contract renewal periods for grants and contracts. We have already received funding documents for federal grants requiring the county sign to assurances that include the county will not use federal funds to promote D E I mandates, policies, programs, or activities that violate any applicable anti-discrimination law. And the county will comply with all executive orders. We're also starting to see, and this will be documented for, as in addition to the slide deck, starting to see immigration come through contracts such as the Raze Grant Contract, which is for Council Creek Trail within L U T.
Can I ask a question? I have actually a question on what I heard you say, but I also have another question or notation about burn rates. You mentioned just now that, that you're seeing language in the contracts and attestation where immigration, something or other, I assume immigration enforcement, but I maybe, that's a guess on my part, is called out. But for something like that federal Raze Grant, which relates to transportation, and you talked about the, the Council Creek Regional Trail, I'm a little mystified as to how a trail relates to immigration. So I'm, I'm, is it just boilerplate language that we're seeing through? Or, or what, I'm obviously missing something there.
There, there is not boilerplate and maybe to extend your thought further, the bullet point, the county will comply with all executive orders further amplifies, Chair, how we are seeing within grants and contracts. Yeah, that it doesn't, the requirements within the contract are not necessarily connected to the activity that we are contracting with the federal government on.
Got it, yeah, okay, so it follows that whole complete third major bullet there with regard to these are the, the requirements through the federal grants, not that it's ness, you know, particular. I can't draw a line between point A to point B. Got it, thank you. So that was my first question and I really appreciate your helping me understand that. On.
Can I just underscore too, just on this chair? From a staff perspective, none of us have seen this type of environment with federal contracts. So the curiosity, curiosity, questions and confusion is frankly, the space staff are holding to.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question once on that?
If it's still on that, go ahead.
Well, she, she brought up the Raze Grant with Council Creek Trail. So we don't have to answer this right now, but I am interested in what are we going to have to do to make sure that we get that money? Because obviously that's critical to the completion of the trail. So at, at some point in time, maybe when you get back, Tanya, if we could have that conversation.
Well, let, let's hold kind of that question because it brings up contracts as a whole. And that will be the portion of this presentation that Marnie will be covering.
Thank you.
Because this is, this is our renewal period, so we're getting new contracts in frequently.
So it sounds like, to answer your question, Commissioner Willie, like, if you're, want to get that contract, then you have to comply with all the executive orders.
Yeah, and I'm wondering what that, what does that look like specifically in this Raze Grant? So that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, that's a good question. Back on the July, August is the primary contract renewal period. So I was on vacation as of June nineteenth through July sixth. And we've had a change in circumstances where we went from needing to attest a certain level of contracts by the end of June to saying, well, our usual practice is we, we do these things in that set timeframe. So things are clean for the new fiscal year. But now we're, it's not that the deadlines have changed, but our practice on some of them is we're, we're pushing the edge of the envelope that much further, which I'm a little afraid for staff because that, it's really down to the wire. You know, nobody can get sick between now and July twenty-third, basically. Because we won't have the luxury of saying, well, you know, it's okay if somebody is out sick this day. We can always get to it tomorrow. It's, we're really down to razor thin margins, it feels like to me. And this is just my way of putting it. But I really do want to underscore that I appreciate all of the incredible examination that you've all done and helping me appreciate the, the level of, of just assessment and trying to continue to do business in service to communities, sticking, I know, operating to our organizational values while also trying to get clarity on these things. So, oh, July and August is, given what you've helped impress upon me in very short order with my return to work yesterday is these grants are different than last fiscal year cycles. And prior fiscal year cycles, you've been able to really zero in on what's changed. And now it's more wholesale change. And that's an incredible volume of work. Thank you. Sorry to take so long with that comment.
That's okay, next slide please. Um, so this is the start of a timeline. This is not a slide your board has seen before, but we had tried to put together just this journey. And Commissioner Phi, I want to connect this to kind of the question that you had raised in the previous presentation. So let me just take an opportunity to walk, walk, walk through where we've been this calendar year. So in January, the county, county administrator alerted the commissioners that we were starting to see executive orders. And based on the executive orders and what we were hearing through the federal government, they could have an impact on funding. And so we immediately brought together a county cross-departmental team to coordinate response. We are still working on our old ERP system, our Oracle system, and have now transitioned to our Workday ERP. So it took a significant effort to get our arms around from a full agency perspective, all of our federal grants and contracts. I'm very appreciative of having the ARPA funding to support the county's first ever centralized grant coordinator to help support this effort. We also started through G R actively meeting with Van Swayk, who is our federal lobbyist, to provide the county timely updates as we've been working through this process. Then in February, the Office of Management and Budget started to freeze federal grants and cancel some grants. I had brought this information forward to you through email and through leadership updates during your board, your board communications and leadership updates. Van Swayk announced that and communicated words and warnings were starting to come forward related to transportation, HUD, and C D B G and health as initial targets of the federal government and looking to align those executive offices, those departments with the federal orders. Then we were deep into budget. The proposed budget message from me, and I'm going to actually read this quote, uncertain federal support is challenging the stability of services provided by Washington County Departments or indirectly passed through dollars used by community-based organizations. So we were still on that watch path in April. The document also started to evolve our language to access and opportunity based on what we were seeing at the federal, federal level. And also just the general need to continue to evolve our equity work here at Washington County. In May, Information Technology Services completed a language audit of the initially what we were hearing were the federally disfavored terms. We had over fifteen thousand hits of these words that were found in our assessment. Then on June eighth, there was a.
Totally the twelve?
Oh, oh, thank you, we'll make that correction, thank you for that. June twelfth, there was a Board Roundtable Presentation on Access and Opportunity. So what is the future direction and evolution of our Office of Equity Inclusion and Community Engagement? Then on June seventeenth, the board had a discussion about potential actions to comply with federal grant requirements, which included a proposed R and O that was pulled from the agenda. At that date, I did announce and I provided in the board communications and leadership update that we would be pausing signing new federal grants or contracts until we could determine what compliance steps we could put in place. I do want to note that pausing not only impacts the county, it also impacts our sub recipients. I want to take the opportunity to also indicate our sub recipients are, just like the county is, is seeing cuts from the federal government and state government. And so that is very challenging for our community-based organizations. Next slide. On June twenty-fourth, your board had discussed in work session a board statement and a path of development of a new resolution, access and opportunity resolution that honors the value of inclusion, reaffirms our commitment to advancing policies and programs. The county administrator, as we had heard earlier and the board is aware, had retained espousal strategies for this scope of work. Copied on this page is the board statement for public information. Next slide. So now that takes us to June and July. We're on an alternative path of rescinding, instead of rescinding, revising, or amending the equity resolution, we are pursuing a new resolution, which your board just reviewed, the very first working draft, which builds from the foundation of the equity resolution and moves us forward. There is still a need through this process to modify and evolve language. This includes updating the board's strategic plan to reflect access and opportunity, evolving the county's website and other documents, evolving language and partner statements and work within R F Ps and agreements. This work in consult with county council and our first, I'm, I'm going to say first blush, but we do need to still go through full legal review and advisement can occur after the access and opportunity is considered and approved by the Board of Commissioners. So this will, work will extend July, August, and moving forward. Because it will take some time and we may determine that some documents we will not update until the next cycle of approval process.
Can I point out another clarification on this slide? And it's on the second level bullet, updating the board's strategic plan update to reflect access and opportunity. I've always tried to be very clear, it's the strategic plan update twenty-four dash twenty-eight. Because as we went through that program, you know, we, it was a point in time we recognized we didn't have the resources to do like a general comprehensive generational update is what I was trying to get at. So we were very specific about that five-year timeframe. And it's still, it was put together for a more limited timeframe. And I, I'm, I feel a heavy responsibility for future boards. And I want to make sure that we've, we've continued to lay that out for them. That's all.
Okay, yeah, we can absolutely make that addition.
Thank you.
Next slide. So now I will turn it over to Marnie. And if I do need to hop off before we're done, I just want to stress anything that we have missed or any additions for the timeline or upcoming information, staff are eager to hear your feedback to make sure that we have a clear record of our journey.
Can, before you start going over this detail, I just want to share, this is the point where, which I really cry. And I'm usually very much a kind of stoic and, you know, thinking person versus a feeling person. You use words like I believe, I don't know, very rarely do I speak out of feelings per se. But this is where the rubber meets the road and we're impacting people and communities. And I know I'm not alone, right? I know fellow board members, Ms. Angie, Alex, all the employees are feeling a lot of feels too. So thank you for letting me just take a moment and recognize my own humanity in all of this. And it's been really hard to be victimized by the misinformation that's been circulating over the last three weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. For the record, Marnie Kyle, I'm one of the Assistant County Administrators. And yes, this has been. Um, and yes, this has been difficult technical work and difficult emotional work for everyone. I know I've seen it in the board. Um, I've seen it at the ACRE meetings. I've seen it when we've met with department directors at our ACA ELT, like every single level, it's been difficult work. Because this organization cares so much about our community and we care so much about the values around serving everyone. So these are the current federal funding that are, I would describe them as in the queue waiting for us to sign. And these, these three, we've talked about quite a bit. So the Community Development Block Grant, Continuum of Care Grant. And, and you've, you've seen this data and the number of people that they serve. And so it's really critical that we can move forward and receive these grants. Community Development Block Grant, we have submitted and requested an extension to submitting our five-year plan that the board just approved a couple of months ago. And so we have until August 15th to submit that plan. If we don't submit that plan by August 15th, that, that is it. We have no more opportunity. And so it's really important that we continue to move through this process so that we can submit that plan and, and receive hopefully approval and receive the funding. Um, and then we've also talked a little bit about the maternal and child health block grant, which really provides nurse home visiting services that serve pregnant women and children, in particular, children with special healthcare needs. And so I also wanted to bring some clarity because in, in early in our conversations, we were concerned about the HUD housing choice vouchers, um, which is a huge federal funding source for the county, 54 million in federal housing. Assistance payment, 1.6 in public housing subsidies, um, serving 34, over 3,400 households annually. We were very concerned about this in the beginning. We now clearly understand that at this moment in time, this is a direct appropriation. So each month we go in and say what we're spending and we get the funds back. We haven't had a problem at this point. We've not been, there's been no requirement to sign an attestation. And there's been no, there has been to date, no change in the federal program policy guidance or administrative rules. And we have seen lots of chatter about that's coming. And as we discussed in the earlier slide, the federal program, so HUD is, does have to follow the executive orders and they will have to implement those orders. So we anticipate at some point, this is likely to change. Um, so
This is a big new finding for me to internalize. And I appreciate the, the clarification that, um, you know, it helps me go from, oh my goodness, we're going to make 3,410 households homeless like that. To now, we expect to continue to receive those payments. And while we're not having to currently do an attestation on this direct appropriation, that could change in the future. So all these steps that we're taking may continue to help us should there be changes in the future. Am I internalizing this correctly?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Marnie and Tanya, this, this is the greatest news.
Yes, yes. And yeah, it, it's just evolving, understanding and watching the chatter and learning from our peers across the nation.
So what you're telling me is, sorry, I'm sorry, just stay with there for a second. What you're telling me is that this resolution that we're working through may not be sufficient moving ahead, or this will, but that we'll have to take other actions in other areas.
So I think what I'm saying is I'm hopeful that the resolution will be adequate. If there's changes to the housing choice voucher based on what I'm seeing now. But we haven't seen new program guidance or language yet. So based on what I'm seeing now, it's really been focused on equity. But there have, there has been some information coming that there may be changes to who, who is eligible for the services based on immigration status. And so that, that wouldn't necessarily be related to the current resolution and order, but it would require us at the program level to look at our program policies and make, and could, it could be that we have to make additional changes. So what I'm saying is we haven't seen the language. We're just seeing chatter. We're seeing forecasting of what it could be based on the executive orders, because they will have to comply with executive orders. HUD will have to comply with executive orders, but they haven't yet changed program administrative rules or policies or guidance.
But that sounds to me more like a program implementation change.
I guess what, what I'm concerned about, if this is an immigration policy that may be changed, that we are going to have, we're going to have to be the front line to attest that we are in compliance with the new immigration rules.
So, so there's, there's two immigration issues. One is sanctuary status. And so that, that's one problem. And that's, that, that is going to be very complicated. And when we talk about Council Creek, the RACE grant, um, I think that's where it becomes very complicated and we don't have answers today about that. With, with housing and HUD, it's more around who is eligible for services. So are undocumented, um, community members allowed to stay in public housing or allowed to receive services? And, and right now, um, there couldn't, can be mixed families.
Right now, we don't ask that question.
We don't ask that, right?
But we're going to have to be
We may, we may, yes.
And I'm hoping that's going forward, not looking backward.
I am hopeful, yes. That, that's how we're implementing all of this because we can't change the past. And so as new guidance comes out, as new executive orders come out, we're looking at moving forward. Do we, can we make changes?
But this is where the three of us are very comfortable that, or continue to be very comfortable. And Jason, Commissioner Snyder has expressed this as well, leaning into the legal assessment and guidance that we are provided, uh, as well as employees in executing our, our role.
And I, I just want to be really clear. We haven't received anything official yet. This is just kind of what we're seeing and hearing on this serve. So we're just preparing. Um, it's coming out probably more from, um, other counties and jurisdictions sharing what they're seeing and hearing.
Marnie, have we thought about asking? I really liked the slide, as I said earlier, and appreciated and it made me look through the contracts that was shared with us. Have we thought about doing a formal ask to HUD? Clarifying whether we need to be, meaning the county must take action related to some of this stuff that you alluded to around immigration and gender ideology and whatnot.
So, um, we've had, um, conversations with regional HUD staff. And to be honest, they are sharing that they're getting no more specific guidance than what we have. So they have seen the executive orders. Um, they have seen the attestations, for example, on CDBG and COC, um, but they, they are not receiving any additional guidance. What we learned, um, for example, with CDBG, we have to turn in our plan, right? Because we're on our five-year cycle. And what we've learned is at the regional level, nothing's really changed, but that there is a second look evaluation of the plan at the federal level. We have seen other counties that have received feedback and been told they have to take certain elements out of the plan. We believe we, we've anticipated that well and that our plan is ready to go and will be approved. But, um, the good news was that the plans were submitted, they were given feedback, you have to make this change, and they were allowed to make the change. But for us, that was good news. Alex, if I say anything that, or you need to add, please jump in.
No, I, I will say that the changes from HUD headquarters, you know, it's actually my former home county in Virginia, that was the recipient of this second level, um, review were very prescriptive in nature, specifically about things to take out of their plan.
Good point. Thank you. Okay. Um, so impacts of pausing, um, signing federal grants and contracts. So as you know, we've delayed signing federal attestations and contracts until, at least until the new access and opportunity resolution is considered and hopefully adopted. This, as you know, has delayed sub recipient agreements for our community-based partners. Um, and it has, as you can imagine, caused uncertainty and confusion among contract administrators within our organization and community partners. And so we are constantly trying to get out updated communication as things evolve and trying to be really clear. I think part of what has led to some of the confusion is that second bullet. Because we have, you know, we, we need to audit and update contract statements of work for all contracts regardless of the funding source. Because as Ms. Angie talked about earlier, it is not a contractor program by program requirement. It isn't, it's a requirement of the organization. And so we can't have some contracts that, um, really push heavy on DEI and some of our old contract language, just because they don't receive federal funding. And so for example, our Behavioral Health Resource Network contracts, we have had to do an audit of the language within the statement of work and asked contract administrators to make changes. And so I think that, you know, that, so, but there's been other contracts that don't have language that's inconsistent with the executive orders that we have just been able to push forward and sign per normal. And so I think it's, 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 it's difficult and confusing because some contracts are moving forward and folks are getting the contracts signed. So for example, um, all of the SHS contracts, because they were easily able to remove a requirement that we thought was inconsistent with the executive orders, generalize the statement. And so then we were able to sign all those contracts and move them forward. So all of the contracts for the SHS access centers, the shelters, um, case management, all of those have moved forward. But other contracts for COC, for example, have not moved forward. Most of the land use and transportation contracts to date have been able to move forward because it's things like, you know, the ADA sidewalks and ramps and buying asphalt or, you know, contracting with people to trim trees so that we have clear access, those kinds of things, those have all moved forward.
So I think another way to put this too is requirements apply organization-wide.
Correct.
And this isn't something that just happened. When I was a metro counselor, uh, we went through a new civil rights update. And, uh, it took some effort to help employees from all parts of the organization recognize that the compliance was organization-wide. It didn't apply just to those parts of the organization that received direct federal funding. So I've, I learned that through my first chapter as an elected official. We're, we're just going through a period of intensity, given the volume of executive orders and the nature of these latest executive orders.
Right.
It feels a little different to us, though, uh, the expectation has been there and we've operationalized it in so many ways really well. It's second nature to us.
Yeah. And, and as you, as your board knows from budget, we have a lot of braiding of funds, state, local, federal funds. And so it would be really impossible to pull those strands of hair apart and say, we can do certain things for this program and not this program. And sometimes it's asking a person to behave one way when you're working on this grant and a different way when you're working on another grant. So it, for, for all sorts of reasons, this really has to be an organizational change. So fiscal burn rate for unsigned contracts. So, um, thank you, Anne Ober and John Steyer. They did a very, very thorough with the help of William Bass, our contract administrator and department inputs. So HHS and housing in particular provided a lot of really helpful information, did a deep dive fiscal analysis, and we have identified one-time strategic investment program funds that can be used to keep our programs whole while we work through this process. And so we have communicated to departments and they are either have or are in the middle of communicating with community-based organizations that they can continue to invoice for programs that they have a contract with that, that ended June 30th, so last fiscal year through the end of July. So we're doing, um, I don't know the, the right legal term, but we're doing non-contract extension, extensions. So we have not required that they sign an extension because that would have been very difficult, but they have been given communication that they can continue to invoice until the end of July.
Which will be the effective date of our new resolution and order and all of the attestation. That's the start date for the attestations applying the new resolution and order, question mark?
Yes. And so if you think about the three immediate that are sitting in my queue right now, my hope and plan is that, um, on the 23rd, I will be signing those. And we will be able to move forward with, with contracts.
And so just to be clear, should there be some sort of a delay on that date, these monies would no longer be dispersed and these organizations, the recipient organizations would be stopped. Those services would abruptly stop.
That is likely.
Or they would be non-reimbursable.
Right.
Well, we can't afford $562,000 a week.
Right. But for example, if, if the community partners want to keep doing the services, we can't pay for them.
Yeah, okay.
Right, right. Services wouldn't necessarily stop. It's their choice.
Right. But we would need to communicate clearly and, and likely advise that they stop work.
Well, I'm, I guess the reason I made this statement is to point out the, the importance that, um, of this July date.
Yes, yes.
And that, um, it's not a well, we were wishing and hoping. It's a
Yes, a break.
It's a bright line.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. I think, well, I think we got through this, but, um, as we said earlier, this burn rate, the 562, does not include the housing choice vouchers because we are being reimbursed for that. I think there was some question about that earlier because the, it wouldn't have, it didn't look like enough money and it wouldn't have been. And so it covers both our expenses, so our staff that continue to work through these processes and grants, um, as well as our community, our community partners.
Okay.
Yeah, Anne and I had a conversation about that last night because I did the math, of course. It, it didn't equal 54 million.
Yes.
That's why, thank you for bringing that up.
What is that? Well, I'm not What is that? I'm not understanding that last bullet.
Yes.
Contracts are retroactive if signed.
Correct, so.
Therefore, funds will be recovered.
So if, if we move forward and we're able to sign the contracts. The contract language says the contract starts July 1st. So it's retroactive to July 1st, so we will be able to submit for reimbursement.
Oh, another change.
Right. And that, that's the hope. And that's why I say if signed.
Asterisk. Current understanding.
It should be recovered.
Okay.
There is no guarantee and that's why we're using.
Instead of will is a may?
Yes, that's a good, good, really good point.
Yeah, because I was really encouraged by the will.
Yeah, sorry.
Not encouraged by.
I reined on the parade.
I will change that to May. I think that's a great point. And that is why we're using SIP. That's why we're using one time funds because there is some risk that we may be, we may determine we can't sign some contracts. Or that for some reason, there's, it, it isn't retroactive per the last 50 years of business with the feds to July 1st. So.
So I'm.
So May. We'll make a big red cross it out.
I'm uncomfortable about our funding scheme. I accept it 100%. But it means that we're having to spend. Those dollars at, at risk.
Yes.
And won't have those funds. Or additional budget challenges that are. We're now appreciating as a result of state unfunded or underfunded mandates, for example.
Yes.
Thank you. My eyes continue to be wide open.
Yes. Yeah, I didn't promise to bring good news.
No, you're bringing.
We're not gonna.
Only, only the news.
You're bringing us the facts that we need to know.
So I also just wanted to share with the board that we do have. And it's an evolving but coordinated one Washington approach to managing all of this. So we have these work streams. The compliance and resolution, which is the resolution order that's under development. Contract and financials. So we have a, so the first one, compliance resolution and order development. That is the work that Tanya is leading with espousal with John L and Lucy. And with your board for the resolution and order. And then we have a team that's working on contract and financials. So that includes our larger departments, HHS and housing, just because of the volume of federal funds that they receive. As well as finance, communication, county admins and, and legal. So that is a group that's meeting weekly. As well as a legal team that is working on all of the legal review required, whether it's the resolution or the contracts. Our websites, like all of the legal review that's necessary to keep this going. And then we have a group led by Eamon in county council and Alicia. Who are really working on the language guidance for the organization. And one of the, one of the things I put at the top is coordinated work streams. Because we are also working hard to make sure that this work isn't happening in silos and that we're talking to each other. I would, I would say formally, it looks like on a weekly basis. But I would tell you that I, in my experience, it's been pretty much every day. So.
I don't know how you get around.
We're, we're doing pretty much every day.
So when you update slide deck, can you put CO or one Washington county approach? In the title?
Yep. Oh, yes.
This is. We're not Washington.
Okay.
We're Washington State.
Yes.
Or the five other, four other Washington counties in the nation.
And I think we ran where Tanya had to leave. But ending once again with this reminder about why we're doing this really difficult work. Yes. And happy to answer questions. And I think Alicia is still in the audience, John L and Lucy.
Well, so. There's the content that's here and we have one more document to go over. Were there any additional questions on the facts as we know them and as presented to them?
Now, this is, this is a great overview. I appreciate that, especially the snapshot on the contracts that are kind of. On hold right now and what we're, what we're funding. And so, yeah, I needed to see this. So thank you for that.
Great. So I would like to turn our attention over to the proposed working draft. One of the board guiding principles as we move forward with this work and the resolution and order. So I put this together after having watched the board work session. And the business meeting of Tuesday, the 24th, as you know, I was away on vacation. But I reviewed the final packets as well as watched those videos as a means to catch up. And I recognized that. There was a need for the updated information, hence the presentation we just went over. But also for us as the Board of Commissioners to utilize. A tool that we have been really successful in using in our very complex budget work. Over these last few years, and that is guiding principles. So what I did is I took feedback from our discussions on June 12th. At the round table, June 17th at our work session. And then that meeting of the 24th. I tried to leverage information from ACRE. I found some available. But as I mentioned, packets still need to be updated. And I pulled out our board principles from the budget. So I'd like to have the opportunity to go through, as you see listed, A through J. And I've been very explicit here in indicating that this draft version one. Of, oops, typo that I'll need to correct. It's July 7th in all cases. I composed leveraging the board's proposed budget guiding principles. Which were part of our budget documents. But the adopted budget files are not yet available on our website. The content was the same. We didn't change the guiding principles. But for the sake of our community, in terms of looking for the sources, I wanted to be as explicit as I could. So. Is everybody with me thus far? Okay, item A. Really foundational to all of our work is the fact that Washington County, Oregon. I think I should insert the word Oregon. Is a diverse community. And the source of that information is our US Census information. As we have relied upon from the decentennial. Did I say that word right, Philip? Good enough, our every 10 year program as well as the American Community Service Updates. Survey updates. Everybody okay on number one? Number two, continue to operate as a county local government in a transparent and open manner. That's been foundational to our work and continues to play a role in our work. On this access and opportunity resolutions. Everybody okay with that? Okay, item C, continue to offer countywide services to all community members. And some people talk about certain populations, which is why I just included that word in parentheses. While adhering to federal, state and local laws and regulations. Yes, sir.
So inserting the word populations, what does that, what does that say to you?
So for example, I was thinking about veterans. Yes, we serve individual veterans, but we have programs for the veterans population. So I wasn't necessarily comfortable with the word groups. So based on that census information, that's where I came to the word populations. If there's a better word, I'm all ears. Or we could strike it all together. But my problem was, it isn't just about. Individual community members, right? There are segments of our community that we provide services for. Segments of our community, you know? We have programs that serve our seniors or are more elderly. We have programs that serve. Those with intellectual developmental disabilities. So that's all. If it doesn't add any value.
Well, I guess to me, all community members was pretty all.
Was good enough?
Yeah, no, I don't, you can leave it in there. It doesn't make any difference to me. I wondered.
Well, this is our. So would folks today like to keep it or nix that word population?
I'd take it out.
Great. It's gone. I'll generate a version two that'll go into the updated packet. Item D, support board goals and governance. That's the same as always. Item E, continue to enhance and evaluate revenue and short, mid and long term fiscal sustainability. Now, this is straight out of our budget ones, but one might ask, why include that? How does that relate to access and opportunity? Well, we can only provide services if we have the funding to do so, right? And this goes to earlier comments that I made of, we can't fix all social ills. If we don't have the funding on specific, on programs, then that's not us. So that's why I included E. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Could this be, now that you say that, I guess I hadn't looked at.
I didn't know how else to put it.
No, I, I'm going back to your.
Oh.
Federal funding guiding principles. And I, I just, I kind of stopped there. I didn't, I didn't look at this from a access. I looked at it as just federal funding.
Well, that's the project we're, that's just the label we're looking at. For this project. So.
Okay.
Given, it could be federal contract.
No, I like the federal funding guiding principle. I just stopped there, like I said, and I didn't encompass just access and opportunity.
Got it. I'm with you.
Overall.
Yes.
This is the big umbrella. So, okay.
Yep. F, honor the continued commitment towards access and opportunity. And the source here is both that combined, the information on access and opportunity. That's in our proposed budget with that roundtable slide set, which is being used. Through all of the engagement.
Is it appropriate here? A week? And I'm, and I'm debating how to do this to reference our former equity resolution.
So I reviewed this with Ms. Angie and Alex.
Oh, and said no.
We're focused on access and opportunity in the context of federal funding.
And I'm just.
The past is definitely the past.
Yeah.
Our equity resolution stands, our values hold, we're just having to.
And I'm just asking the obvious question.
Yeah. No, it's great. This is, this is our forum. All the work session for a reason. G, objectively evaluate services with a priority on mandated services. So this once again is right out of the budget stuff. But you know, this is, helps us answer the question, why do we do what we do? Item I, understand service impacts on community members' daily lives. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. H, continue to position the organization for the future. So this is like breathing for us. We do this in the now context, but we also do it looking ahead and into the future. You know, I gave an example of that earlier about thinking about future boards. I understand service impacts on community member daily lives. I thought this was important to include in the list because as we've highlighted, it's about people, people, people. We don't do services for machines. We do services for people. And we might do offer some of those services through machines and robots and computers and processes and whatnot, but it's all about the people. Lastly, J, balance systems of service and continue to pursue a one Washington county approach. This is also like breathing for us, but I believe it's important to recognize. Also, in light of some of the public comment that we've received about, well, why don't you basically, in my words, silo what it is you're doing? And that isn't how we function as an organization at this point. So. Anything else on these? Anything that comes to mind that's missing? And we'll continue to have this as a foundational tool within our packet set.
I think, and I'll ask you this question if it's already in here somewhere.
Yeah.
But one of our guiding principles on the budget side of things has always been, we don't spend one time money for ongoing services. So should that be a part of this?
Actually, it doesn't exist in our board principles, but it's in our fiscal policies.
Okay.
But I see your point.
So do we refer to our fiscal policies in this as a guiding principle? I guess I just want to wrap it all together. So we're just not.
Adopted our fiscal policies, so our fiscal policy stand. But this is, we've used this tool of guiding principles to help set some bookends, so to speak. Towards the problem solving to come to our desired outcome.
No, I get.
The solutions development.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right.
So you're right to keep the fiscal policies in mind. It's how we accomplish our work.
Okay.
Are we thumbs up with this?
Yeah, I'm good.
Yes.
Yep.
I, I'm, I have a question on C. This is a good start, by the way, Jared, and thanks for your work here. You have a lot of good stuff today. Continue to offer countywide services to all community members while adhering to federal. I would like to add without compromising state and local laws and regulations.
We.
Do we need to say something that we?
No. What does that mean? Because we don't have authority over state laws.
I think, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna put words in your mouth.
I'll take right out.
The sanctuary state status could be challenged if we follow the federal guidelines. And are you saying here that with, by putting that verbiage in between federal and state? That we are. Committed to adhering to our sanctuary state status in those guys. Ma'am, I'm trying to figure out what it is that you're trying to say here.
While adhering to federal. I think this is about federal executive orders and whatnot, right? Like this is the work we're currently, the problem we're solving right now is accepting federal grants. Which have conditions around executive orders. And so that's the problem we're solving. And if this bullet point is. And I appreciate what you said earlier, calling out the title of this federal funding guideline, guiding principles. then we cannot adhere to all the executive orders without compromising state and local laws. That's just the reality. So perhaps.
Well, I think what I'm looking at, I'm looking at the word adhering to federal, state, and local laws. So when we say we're adhering to federal, that is, you can't do that and not adhere to state and local as well. So.
Well, if you adhere, the way I'm.
You can't adhere to federal and say, oh, but except for this, this, and this, we can't. So anyway, I'm sorry, I may be misinterpreting.
So without compromising state and local law, state laws, let's just go with the state. And I think you were heading in that direction around, like, if we were to adhere to all the federal laws, including the executive orders, we will be compromising the state.
I don't understand those word compromising.
Like, or contradicting. Without contradicting, without being in conflict with state law.
How about violating?
Violating, yeah.
No, uh-uh, sorry. Here. So there, so this has gotten a legal scan. And this leverages wording that we've used previously. But as labeled, this whole set is pending thorough legal review that will continue to evolve over the course of the next week and a half. So we are feder. There is case law, as I understand it, where state law cannot trump federal law. Sorry for the pun. And I'm not trying to question that. Where there are conflicts between federal and state, they get to figure it out. Okay? And there's a lot going on at the state level with regard to federal level. We've been through this process before with regard to the state sanctuary status. And we are required to adhere to federal and state law. And where it goes to the implementation is, there is state law that does not allow our public safety officers to be, to implement federal immigration, status checking. I can't remember the exact wording. And so there, there is a very specific construct for that that has survived the test of time since the state put that sanctuary status in place in the 1970s. So the conditions of this language have not changed. And what we're just reacting to is the changes in adhering to federal laws. So I'm, that's why I put this, ensured that this language is there because in the delivery of our services and in problem solving, the only thing that has changed is with regard to the executive orders and what legal has given us for the language around the latest federal regulations. And we, we are a county government that is reliant upon both federal and state funding. And we have to continue to adhere to federal, state, and local laws and regulations. It's just a fact. So.
Well, I think the Supreme Court probably is going to resolve, be required to at least to walk that line.
Yeah. Absolutely. We are not, we're the travelers on this journey.
Well, and if I can add, Chair, I mean, this is obviously a nationwide issue that multiple states and local jurisdictions are grappling with right now. And even in the state of Oregon, and I can share in this setting, my conversations with the Attorney General's office, they're grappling with this at their level too, because there are 36 similarly situated counties in the state of Oregon that could all be put in the same position between state and federal enforcement. So it's not something we have an answer to today.
But state, the state officials have to look out for the state and have to provide us guidance in terms of how do we satisfy, or how do we have an understanding of what the state expects us to do? But they are not, they can't provide us with legal advice, legal coverage.
That's correct.
So as, as a singular commissioner here, I'm, I am comfortable with C because I individually will never have a time where I don't adhere to federal, state, and local laws.
Yeah, you took an oath of office.
So that's, so from my pers, I'm just saying that I think that's the, that's the lens that I'm looking at this statement through. Issues of definition of those laws are outside of my sphere of control.
That's right.
So for me, adhering to the, the laws as they stand, I'm comfortable with, with C. And that's why.
No, I appreciate it. I, I'm not comfortable because I think we need to unpack what we mean adhering to federal law because this is about the executive orders and accepting the federal grants. So I think we need to unpack what we're saying about federal because, yeah, we already, like you said, Chair Harrington, we already adhere to federal, state, and local laws and regulations that is giving. But right here, the, the problem we're solving is, how do we accept the federal grants? Do we adhere to these executive orders? And we cannot adhere without violating, I'll borrow your word, Commissioner Willie, without violating state and, to be, in my own interpretation, local laws. So I think we need to pause these guiding principles and perhaps align with legal analysis to try to figure out what is the, because I'm not sure what problem we're solving then. If we already know we adhere to federal and state and local laws, then what problem are we solving with this guiding principles? What we're solving is, how do we get the federal dollars while there is a condition around these executive orders? That's the problem we're solving. Otherwise, we don't need this guiding principle.
So I didn't think the guiding principles was, was here to solve something. I thought.
What's the purpose of them then? We don't need a thumbs up or a thumbs down then. Why are we having this discussion?
Yes, actually, we do.
To define what it is that we're doing. That's why I think these are, these are important that we have these. So there isn't any.
I disagree, but.
Okay.
Well, and that's fine.
Yeah, that's okay.
That's fine. You can stand alone.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable going ahead with this. And if in your conversations with county council and others, we determine that there is some revision that needs to be done on this, then we can have that conversation. So I'm comfortable moving ahead with this right now. And that's just me, Chair. I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of you, but I'm there.
So in completion, I hear three of us comfortable in moving forward and memorializing the guiding principles as a version two with adding the word Oregon in item A and striking paren populations, closed paren, on item C. Okay?
Okay.
Alrighty. I think that was all the material that we had on this topic. So that just leaves us with taking a 15-minute break and then coming back to board and leadership communication. For the purposes of time, would folks be comfortable with just eight-minute break so that we pick up at 11:30 and strive to be done soon within the noon hour?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we'll see everyone back here at 11:30 on that clock. Thank you. Okay, we'll see everyone back here at 11:30 on that clock. Thank you.
They won't even let us know if other colleagues are.
Well, I know who is. I think it's better.
It went to. It went to the B C.
Mine didn't go there.
All righty.
And I called O G E C and said, am I on this list? It missed me, but I didn't.
Welcome, welcome back commissioners. And back to you Chair Harrington.
Thank you Clerk Moss. So we are now entering board and leadership communication. I'll start off with board communication. As I think everyone knows, I've been on vacation since June 19th. And there's been a lot to come up to speed on. I haven't even touched my C W S email. And given that we don't need the rest of our afternoon, I do have a couple of meetings that have come in. I'm hoping I'll get to all of my C W S emails before noon tomorrow. So I apologize to you, Rick, as well as the full executive team, and that includes legal. I'm doing the best I can. Let's see. I had a great vacation. I highly recommend, as I always say this upon returning from vacation, plan them and take them. That's part of our work environments and culture. This is the first time I've taken a two-week plus vacation in over a decade. So it's been a lot to return to. I know Commissioner Tree stood earlier this year, and I did not do a good enough job in asking her what reentry was like. And I will also note that jet lag is kicking my butt. Yesterday, I was wide awake by 3:45 in the morning. Today it was by 15:00, so it's getting better. But I thank everyone in advance for your helpfulness for me as I transition back to this time zone. Busy week, busy times. Coming up, I'm looking forward to our C W S work session day. I've also caught up with the state of affairs with regard to metro and S H S reform. We don't have a roundtable this month, Kevin, since we're now in the first full week of business here in July. Would it be possible after the Wednesday sync up on rolling agenda for you to issue an upcoming set for each of us? Certainly, there's been a state of flux. We know we'll be going over this federal funding project weekly for the next couple of plus weeks. Until we get that, that done and the extent of work has been bigger than I ever imagined. And we're getting through it and everybody's doing an awesome job. I really want to give a great shout out and a thanks to the team putting together the leadership training here at Washington County, but also excellence with the first ever P A F R. I've caught up with that as well. There is a T C, Metro Supportive Housing Services Tri-County Planning Body meeting this week. I was kind of blown away with a packet that was 184 pages. No, I didn't read every single word on every single page, but I did manage to work through that. Oh, it was a lot. We do need to figure out how to sync up planning-wise as a board on continued S H S work as Metro Council insists on making changes and doing work. Simultaneous to our having a lot of work to do to adjust to current circumstances, specifically as influenced by federal funding, but also the, the updates from the, the long state legislative session and impacts to our organization and continuing to adjust our own policy and investment decision-making through supplemental budget and, 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 and. It goes on. So, but we do incredible work here. We're fortunate to do it and onward how we go. That's it from me for now. Who wants to go next on the board?
You tapping me?
You go. I'll go. Yeah. So last week I actually also took advantage and did some vacation and also did some catching up on clean water services. I want to thank your staff are very available, the legal and the chief of staff. So thank you all for accepting my calls and answering my questions and being available. Thank you. And this week I'm going to N A C O conference. I'll come back with a lot of information. That's my update.
Where's the conferences go around?
Oh, this, thank you Chair. It's Philadelphia this year. I'm going to the general conference. So yeah. There's a legislative conference and then the general. Yeah, it's in.
Always the general one.
Yeah.
And the legislative one is in spring.
Yeah.
In March, February. Got it. I'm with you.
Yeah. So it's in Philadelphia. It's my first time in Philadelphia and I'm really looking forward to it. I always find that I, I feel it made me a really effective commissioner going to those conferences. So N A C O, so I'll be there representing our board. Because I think I'm the only one going.
Tanya's going.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
Have a good trip.
Thank you Chair.
Go next. I mean, to start, two weeks ago, I attended the Metro President State of the Region address at the Oregon Zoo. There, that was right at, it was just on the heels of the announcement that they would not be putting the, the measure on the ballot. So there was a lot of discussion about that. And then later that evening, I went to.
Before you move off, how is the state of the region?
Well, you were there too. It, it was, it was mixed, I think.
Okay.
I think that that's a fair, fair way to. President Peterson was concerned about funding levels, about things that she intended to do. But she also then talked about instituting more economic development programmatic pieces. So that kind of raised some eyebrows, I think, for people. So.
Thank you for giving you some context.
Yep. Okay, so later that evening, I was back at Metro for M P A C. And the important piece of that was that M P A C did endorse the L P A, the Locally Preferred Alternative for the T V Highway. So, and that was unanimously. They also endorsed the Montgomery Park Streetcar Extension. There was a lot of debate about that one in that it wasn't of regional impact. So there, you know, there was that discussion and that did not pass unanimously. But T V Highway did. And there was also some discussion around future vision, the future vision plan and the sculpting of that and who's on that commission. So that was, that was interesting. Then I also had an R W A C meeting last week. So that, or that week was kind of all metro all the time. I, I want to also just let everyone here know that I'm working to try to work from Clean Water Services Central Office on Mondays for a few hours. So I go there and I, I work in the, in that office. This coming Monday, I won't be able to, but I'm usually there for like between three to five hours. And I, I take my regular meetings. I took the legislative meeting there yesterday, but it gives me a chance to talk to people and just be on the scene.
Which you reminded me, sorry to, can we pause her clock for a second? I know I had a little bit more time left. But speaking of C W S, I just wanted to share publicly that an O G E C complaint has been filed asking for information with regard to my travel, any compensation, and which we know there isn't any for C W S for board members, but travel that I may have taken as a C W S Board of Director. So I don't know. The documentation I've been provided is the complaint listed all five of us? Four, four of us?
Jason was not included because he hasn't traveled for Clean Water Services.
Right. Okay. Well, and I just wanted to share that I haven't traveled for C W S this calendar year, which means none of my email correspondence relative to travel is on C W S servers. It's all on the Washington County servers because the agency had, C W S agency had us using our Washington County email addresses. So I still have to go through and do all that records management to deliver it to O G E C. And, you know, I'm nonplussed about it because it's all just our standard stuff. So, but I just wanted to share that.
I've also, I've also been working on pulling all my materials. I worked on that over this past weekend as well. Yesterday was the Association of Oregon County's Legislative Committee update. It was, it was interesting, but I'm really looking forward to our wrap up here because that's, that's, that'll be much more pertinent to me. There was a lot of pieces there that certainly I, I felt, but there's some that I didn't feel so much. So that's the way it is.
Right there with you.
This Friday is a, it's a busy day for me. I'll be at the Work Systems Inc quarterly meeting and then they're having an open house in the afternoon.
Could you come back at some future date? I might be the only one interested, but I think it applies to us. The Work Forces Board has leverages both federal and state and local funding. And I'm wondering, given federal funding changes, what I need to adjust in my thinking in terms of what Work Systems Inc is able to deliver. So I don't know if the Board of W S I has, has such information yet, but I look forward to, I feel like now is the appropriate time in the second half of the year to really ground my assumptions and expectations into whatever the new reality is.
And that's part of the information we'll be getting.
Oh, okay. Terrific. Thank you.
All right. So that's, that's really, I have a lot of information here about acre meetings and things, but we've been working through all that. So I'll give the rest of my time to.
All right. I get six minutes then. Didn't she say she was giving me her minute?
You're spending it.
Okay. So yeah, a couple of weeks ago, I also attended the Metro President State of the Region address. Probably the comments might have been a little different a few days later when the transportation package.
The other thing to catch up on.
That'll be, that would have been a different conversation. Also, C O P A C Executive Meeting to talk about not only C O P A C but Northwest Act since the transportation bill did not pass and O D O T is laying off a significant number of people, or at least eliminating positions. They have also decided not to renew. C O P A C had been contractually responsible with O D O T to manage the Northwest Act administratively. And O D O T has now decided not to renew that contract as of July 1. So that's about a $30,000 impact to C O P A C's financials. And now we're trying to figure out what exactly does that mean? What kind of input will we have to O D O T through our Northwest Act? And so I've reached out to Region One Act. O D O T already manages Region One, so it won't have much of an impact on them, but we are now looking at other options.
So pardon me, jet lag brain. Were you talking about Northwest Act or both Northwest Act and C O P A C? Somehow I mixed.
C O P A C administratively was paid by O D O T to manage Northwest Act.
Oh, okay.
So C O P A C is called upon to set the agenda with O D O T and arrange the meetings and, and those kinds of things. Because we.
So there's an impact.
We float around, remember, in the three counties. So.
Yep.
So yeah, we are working on that. I'll have some more information. I think once we get a little bit further, we're, it's going to be interesting to see how O D O T actually administrates the acts because it's not just Northwest Act, it's every act in. So, so they pull.
And the three counties here are Washington, Y M Hill and.
Well, it's actually Western Washington County, Calumet, Placid and Columbia. So it's three and a half county.
Okay. So, or yeah, yeah. Got it.
Okay. So yeah, that's continuing conversations that we'll have. Also, last week, the high point of the week was kind of the high point and the low point. The high point was going salmon fishing with my grandson on the Walamette. The low point was we didn't catch any doggone salmon. So we're going back in August. So we have.
May the salmon be running.
Yes. Well, the Columbia is closed until August 1st, so that's why you have to fish on the lammet. But our fishing guide, which I bought the package from the Schools Foundation Auction, he agreed to take us again in August. He felt bad for my grandson, who sat out there for five hours, starting at 5:10 in the morning. You were on the river. So try getting a ten-year-old up at four o'clock in the morning, packing him off.
No, I'll take a pass on that.
He was really good. He was, he was more excited than I was about these things. And then more disappointed that we didn't catch any fish. There was probably 75 boats out there and there was four fish landed.
Kudos to you for being a great father.
We'll see how he does next time.
Exactly right. Well, we better catch something next time. So also, as you know, the fair is starting up on the 18th of this month. And so everything is moving very quickly in that regards. I have a schedule of events. If anybody would, I would like to see our commissioners.
Would love that schedule of events.
Yeah, because we've got, obviously livestock is the first part of the fair and then lots of other activities, 4-H activities. As the Fair Board, we will be providing a pancake breakfast for the last four days of the fair. So if anybody wants to show up with me at six o'clock in the morning and flip a few pancakes. Okay, I'm kidding. So the, anyway, we've got lots of good things.
She's so, she's awake.
She's already awake. And so is Tanya. I know, she gets that breakfast. Anyway, so we got that. Don't forget that. And I will remind you again next week upcoming events, and I will certainly get all of us a schedule
Please.
of events for the fair.
Thank you.
Made it as quickly taking notes. Also, last week, we had the Fourth of July Parade. Longest standing, I think, Fourth of July Parade in Oregon. It's put on by the Rotary Club of Hillsboro. And as usual, I was assigned a street monitor to keep the children from getting ran over by big trucks. And so that's always fun. And it was a great day for it. It was probably, I don't know, high 70s. It's a perfect day for a parade. So we had a good time there. Well attended too. It's a big deal. And then lastly, this Saturday, I am going to Wheeler for a Salmonberry Trail Board Meeting in the morning. And then the city of Wheeler has fully embraced a section of the Salmonberry Trail. And so we're going to do a ribbon cutting and start the process of building that trail and raising money for that, of course, through the Telemac Coast Visitors Association are going to be sponsors of that as well as others. So that'll be very cool. And we got to do this in baby steps because it's a very expensive process. And so we in Washington County are also working on the portion of the trail, as you know, out by the park out there. So anyway, I'll keep you up to speed on that. And we are getting a work session in a few weeks on S T I A and the relationship with Senate. So that's all I got.
Thank you. It also reminds me, I forgot to mention that the monthly chair mirrors meeting next Monday. Topic theme is Clean Water Services. Really good update. And Rick and Elizabeth will be there and take you through some of our great work. Well, leadership communication, who would like to go first?
I'll go.
Go ahead.
Good morning Chair Harrington and Commissioners. I have a couple of updates for you and I'm going to put them all in a fairly good news category since you had heavy topics today. So as your board is already aware, Moody's Rating designated Washington County's recent issuance of the $144.6 million in bonded debt is having a triple A rating, which is the highest level. The global financial evaluation firm issues for municipal. in bonded debt is having a triple-A rating, which is the highest level the global financial evaluation firm issues for municipal government debt. In making its designation, Moody's cited Washington County's strong and diverse economic base, strong financial position supported by prudent fiscal management and low leverage. Moody's announcement is an important independent acknowledgement of the hard work of your board and our department leaders in recent years to build a stable financial environment over time for our organization. And the communications team in the county administrative office will issue a media release about Moody's announcement this week. So look for that. Secondly, your board also was aware, this was, came from a prior leadership update, but on April 3rd, Washington County was designated as a storm-ready community by the National Weather Service. Storm Ready helps arm America's communities with the communication and safety skills needed to save lives and property before, during, and after hazardous weather events. The designation means the county has met standards for ensuring we can receive, share, and respond to hazardous weather forecasts and for preparing community members for weather impacts. This recognition is the latest step in a productive and longstanding partnership we've had with the Portland Weather Service to protect our community. And as you may also recall, I think Ms. Angie announced that the Weather Service staff were not authorized to travel out here to have a ceremony, which would have been our preference. But tomorrow, July 9th, Chair Harrington will already be in Portland for a meeting, and will be participating in a short ceremony with the Weather Service, attended by our county emergency management manager, manager John Wheeler, to accept this award. So thank you for doing that.
You bet, and I think it's really incredible for us to serve both on the Commission for Washington County, but also on the Clean Water Services Board. We've learned a lot about climate change and the impacts and the modeling. And that was a learning day back in 2022, I believe. And Ting Lu took us through scenario information. And then prior to that time, we had seen places in Europe have these huge storm events and flooding. And now we've experienced it here in our nation, not just in the central United States, but through the Guadalupe River and Texas. And so one of the future things I'm wondering about is what, what resources, what knowledge do the two agencies need in order to take advantage of the actual weather happenings of the most recent five years? To see, do our simulations, our predictions still hold? Or do we have to up-level them again? It's just, it blows my mind, the magnitude of, you know, reports of like, I don't know, 20 inches of rain over a five-hour period, just, whoo.
That's what I was wondering, if the award is umbrellas.
Really not funny.
Nice idea then.
Yeah. Thank you. And then to round out the good news, I am happy to announce that Sarah Hagan, who's in the room seated beside Philip Bransford, has joined the communications team in the county administrative office as our new public affairs and communications manager. Sarah comes to Washington County after serving four years as the communication manager for the city of Gresham, where she oversaw a team of devoted, devoted to media relations, public affairs, social media, web content, and digital marketing. And under her leadership, Gresham voters adopted their first property tax levy in 30 years. Prior to that, Sarah was the regional communications manager for the American Red Cross Cascades region during the COVID-19 pandemic and Oregon's worst wildland fires in 2020. Sarah also has experience in K-12 curriculum development, strategic marketing, and public affairs in the private sector. She's earned a master's degree in public administration from Portland State University and a bachelor's degree in business marketing from San Jose State University, and we are thrilled to have her.
Welcome aboard.
And that concludes my supper.
That's good news.
I know.
Chair and Commissioners, good morning. I, I also hope to end with a couple pieces of good news today. First, I just want to hold up some of the folks in our county council's office, who, we have a core group of four or five general counsel attorneys who've been working very closely with our partners and county departments who try to work through these federal grant issues. It's taking a lot of time, and this is on top of everything else that they do to help keep our departments running. And so to those folks, I really appreciate their work. And, and, you know, I know they're going to continue helping as much as they can, our partners. On the topic of federal grant funding, as if we haven't talked about it enough, I've been asked to speak to a group of city managers from Washington County on August 6th, really just, and their, their legal counsel as well, to talk about areas where maybe there's some shared interests between our county and their jurisdictions. So I'll certainly come back to your board with a report out after that meeting and kind of, you know, define for you where, where we see some opportunities for cooperation. Over the last two weeks, I've had an opportunity to meet with some of our other elected officials, specifically the district attorney and Judge Cross out at Beaverton, who are both very, very generous with their time with me, and I really appreciate both of them taking the time and look forward to having a good cordial working relationship with both of them moving forward. And then the last piece of good news, we are in the process of hiring a new litigation attorney, a senior county counsel for litigation. We are in the middle of that process, so I won't get into the details, but I will say we've had the opportunity to interview some wonderful candidates. I expect we're going to have a selection shortly, and then once we have that person on board, I will bring them to your board to introduce themselves, and that's all I have for you today.
Terrific, thank you.
Rick. Good morning, Clean Water Board of Directors, Chair. I was also out last week. Nor that exciting. I was in the Midwest, surviving the heat and humidity for a wedding and visiting family and friends. So it was a great reminder why I moved to Oregon 30 years ago. Had a lot of fun, gained a lot of weight. I managed to eat nothing healthy in seven days. We did start the forensic accounting investigation of training, travel, and mere expenditures by district employees over the last three years. That, that began last week. It's being performed by an independent third-party investigator, Marat, Marones Analytical. And it's considered more thorough than a traditional audit, I believe, because of the level of receipts and things that they are going through. There will be a report that's produced. It will be available to the public, and currently that's scheduled to be completed on September 30th. Also, some policies per the RNO. We reviewed and updated two of our policies, which I signed, training and travel policy, and also the meals and refreshments policy. And did manage to do some work while we're back at home. We kept moving, and we're excited for the CWS Board Work Session, All-Day Session that's coming up Friday, July 18th, at the Rock Creek Engineering Building from 9:00 to 4:00. Full day is planned. We'll update on the plan to rebuild trust, talk about board planning time, some of the billing options and discussions. We'll carry that forward. We'll provide and go through an executive summary of the West Basin Master Plan, give you an update on what's happening with the occupied building spaces. And then if we have time, we'll try to get out and do a tour of the Rock Creek Primary Clarifier project, which is basically completed, up and running, just a few little odds and ends to get done there with that.
If we don't have time to actually see it physically in person.
Yeah.
Plan B, so to speak, is if you could just give us an overview.
Sure.
Of the role, what the construction's been like, that'll be great.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah.
That's it from me.
Great, thank you and welcome back.
Yeah, thanks.
And your first full new fiscal year in your new role.
Yes.
Thank you, great. Anything else for the good of the order today? All right, hey, look at that, we're even ahead of schedule. So we will adjourn today's work session. See you next Tuesday, July 15th. Thank you.